Call the Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order July twenty-second at seven oh one P M. We stand, if you're able, for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One A official meeting notice, Dr. Reuter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those in news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
One B roll call, Mr. Barney.
Ewer.
Here.
Brown.
Present.
Barney is here. Loth is absent, excused. Medved?
Here.
Pollack?
Here.
Higginbotham?
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Three reports, three A district administrator update, Dr. Chris Reuter.
Thank you, good evening. We have finished another school year. Summer school ended last Friday with the conclusion of that. I was able to be there a few days. Mr. Mizziak was there almost every day. Mrs. Cole was there as a principal some of the time, and we had a lot of kids engaged in a lot of great activities throughout the summer. Mr. Mizziak will provide a comprehensive report, I believe, in September, sharing the results, total enrollment, total staff, and hopefully a financial outlook on what, how we did from a summer school standpoint, and shared, we'll also share some of the things that were minor tweaks to scheduling and those type of things that worked out. But every time I went over there in the morning, there were kids out in the front of Kennedy enjoying, as well as kids in the classroom, adults engaging with them. So we're on to our next school year, which is the academic year coming up in five and a half weeks, I think, so I'm sweating a little bit right now. Also, this, since we last met, July one started a contract for all of our new administrators. Mrs. Cole's here tonight in her new capacity, welcome, as Director of Pupil Service, and all four of our new principals, Dave Smith at the high school, Lindsay Chandali at Amy Bell and Kelly Schultz at County Line have begun working in their new roles, meeting with staff and transitioning. We've put together as a director team, transition plans for each of the new administrators and how we can support them in there for, over the course of the summer into the fall, and those plans are already fully engaged and ready to go. We currently do have one administrative opening left, our high school principal position, that was vacated by Dave Smith moving to the principal, and we've done a few rounds of interviews. We're looking for the right fit for that person, and I believe that later this week we have a couple more interviews scheduled, so our goal is to then bring someone to the board, either prior to our August meeting or August meeting, depending upon how that timeline falls.
For, for the assistant principal?
For the assistant principal, yes. As well as you'll hear from Mr. Noack tonight, Mr. Brown from the Personnel Committee, we're almost fully staffed, and we have, we're looking good. We have a few vacancies open, but we'll hear more through personnel report. And we have some guests this evening. We have Ms. Jill North here from Destination Imagination, and some of our students that will be coming up shortly to share the great things that are happening in that programming as well. So, and then Steve Crackle, I was here this evening too, from the village to share some TID updates with what's going on in the village, so we have a jam-packed July board meeting.
Fantastic. With that, three B Destination Imagination update, Jill North. Welcome.
Thanks. So I'm gonna stand to the side like this because in Destination Imagination, we never have a blacks to the audience, so tense. So research says that you're twenty-five times more likely to share something negative than positive. Well, I'm going to go against the odds and share something positive this evening. So I'm here actually on the behalf of Mary Bykowski, who is the district coordinator for DI, but she's on her, I'll call it DI from now on instead of Destination Imagination because that's a multiple. And she's up north on her summer, like, hour and hour trip, but she wanted me to share one thing, and she said that people stop me all the time in stores and on the street to thank me for having Destination Imagination in Germantown and in the state, and the kids who have done DI attribute their present success to being a participant. And I will echo that because I have three daughters that went through the program. They're all adults now. No one lives in my basement, and they all have good jobs, make money, and are successful, okay? And certainly I attribute the program to part of that. So I'm here to thank you as the board and the school district for continuing to support Destination Imagination. That is, we want to see it always continue because it, it's, I, I'm passionate about it, and I'm still here, and my kids are way out of the program. So the, the impact of it is that there are thirty thousand kids that are involved in DI, and it's in forty states. Wisconsin was second as a contingent at Global's the last two years, and Texas is the first, okay? And of that second, Germantown was twenty-five percent of those teams, so we have, we have a big presence, okay? And we want to continue that. It's also in six Canadian provinces and twenty-seven countries. So, well, I guess I really don't have to say this, but raise both your hands if you're here for DI. It's pretty obvious because I, I swear some of your DI t-shirts up here all, yes. So the district last year had thirteen teams and eight qualified to go to Global's, and it is the only program that is at every school for all age groups. That is second grade to twelfth grade. It includes boys and girls on a team that have up to seven kids, and you compete at, like, elementary level, middle school level, or high school level. And there is actually a university level, but there aren't a lot of participants in that, it's not as strong. So just can I give you, I mean, I think some of you are familiar with DI, but I'll do just a slight review. So what they do is they solve a long-term challenge that they work on for months, and they do it in form of a skit that has certain, like, parameters that they, they have to follow, and the kids get to choose which challenge that they want to do. There's the fine arts one, there's the technical one, there's the scientific one, there's an engineering one, there's an improv one, and there's a community service, and then they have a specific challenge for, like, second graders, okay? Then, the other part of the competition is doing an instant challenge where the kids go in a room with their team manager, but the team manager doesn't help them, and then they have to solve something, they have no idea what it is until they walk in the room. And I'll give you an example of, how many of you remember the Apollo Thirteen movie? Yeah, so the astronauts were in space, okay? They were stuck up there, so they put the engineers in a room with the stuff they had in space, and they said, get 'em down. So that is a real live instant challenge that the kids actually train for in this program. And then Germantown competes, well, on a regional level, if you place at that, you go to state, and the district funds up to that point, so thank you. Then for global level, we, the teams fundraise. I mean, there was, I will say, many decades ago where that was part of district funding, but then again, the district didn't fund any other entity that went outside the state, so when all fairness, I mean, that was fine, okay? Yeah. It's a program that teaches the twenty-first century. We call it STEAM because we put the A in it instead of STEM, and it has kids where they can really empower themselves. And it's all about, like, what they can do with what they have, okay? And they have to do everything themselves. The, the coach team manager cannot be hands-on. You can teach a student how to solder or how to weld, but you can't do it for them when they construct what they're doing, okay? They all have to do it on their own. So employers want these days kids that are critical thinkers, creative problem solvers, project managers, can time manage, money manage, and that's what this program does for all these kids here. Now, I will say, as an adult, I have been involved in this for more than twenty-five years, and I have learned a lot in twenty-five years, so it's not just, not just been related. So that's the facts and review, but we have a couple of students that have agreed to say a few things about DI, so come on forward.
My name is Maddie Cole, and I'm really excited to talk about Destination Imagination and how much it has helped me grow as a person. I've been a part of DI since two thousand seventeen, and this program has been a huge part of my life. I've learned so much from it. Destination Imagination has taught me the importance of teamwork. Working with my team on different challenges has shown me how to communicate better, respect everyone's idea, and use our individual strengths to accomplish a common goal. These skills have made me a better person. DI has also pushed me to think outside of the box and to solve problems creatively. We have faced some tough challenges, and I have learned that it's okay to fail because it's all part of the learning process. This mindset has made me more confident and determined in everything I do. One of the biggest things DI has helped me with is overcoming my fear of talking in front of other people. Before DI, I used to get really nervous speaking in front of a crowd, but through presenting our challenges and working with my team, I have gained so much confidence. Now I feel much more comfortable and self-assured when I have to speak publicly. You may not know this, but Germantown has a reputation for having strong DI teams, and other schools look at us and what we are doing to solve the challenges. One of the most amazing experiences I have, I've had with Destination Imagination was going to Global's. Meeting people from all over the world, like Ukraine, Poland, China, Mexico, and the Cayman Islands was incredible. It has shown me how diverse and connected our world is, and I have made many friendships and memories along the way. Destination Imagination has made me more curious and eager to learn new things. It's encouraged me to step outside of my comfort zone and to try new things and experiences. The creative, the creativity and excitement I have found in DI has inspired me to keep exploring and growing. Destination Imagination has been an amazing journey. It's given me valuable skills, a positive outlook, and a love for learning that will carry with me forever. I'm really thankful for everything I've gained from this program and the awesome memories I've made with my team. Please continue to support Destination Imagination so that other students can have these incredible opportunities. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. To add on to that, I'd probably say, if somebody asked me, just, what is DI? How do I like DI? I'd just say, it's a fun club to hang out with friends, but if you ask me on a deeper level, I've learned so many core skills in, through my DI years, I think I've been three, four years, but I've learned so many communication skills. I was really struggling with teamwork, and I've learned just how to be creative in my life, and it just, it's really impacted me, getting connections, and not only have I made really good connections and friends throughout the years, but I've made friends and connections globally, and I've met so many great people, and that's, so thank you guys for listening.
Thank you for sharing.
So I am, I knew Maddie when she was at Amy Bell in third grade, and she was such a shy girl. Oh, my gosh. And then years go by, and I see her, and I'm like, oh, my God, it, it warmed my heart to see how she had grown, not just physically, but just as she said, there was no way before you would have done that. Exactly. And granted, she's got some tears on her also, so, but does anyone else want to share anything? So Carmen Wester has been a team manager for many years, since elementary, and now she's at the high school level. And I will say, the team that she managed this year had a walk on stage on Global's, and you got the best in the world, and a lot of years.
I didn't plan anything, but I will tell you a couple of things about my journey with DI. So when I came about eight years ago, moved from Dominique Falls, and I'll tell you, I loved the Falls School District. I was a little hesitant to move into Germantown, not that it wasn't a good school district, but I just had such a strong rapport with, with the Falls.
I do remember that.
Remember that, yeah. And so then I met, I, so we went and then I worked, I worked at Durco Aerospace, I don't know if any of you know that, but there I had a lot of people that lived in Germantown, and they told me about, oh, there's this great program called Destination Imagination, and I'm like, all right, whatever. Well, Jill, of course, organized it when it's Amy Bell, and Jill had, you know, my middle daughter decided she wanted to do this, so, okay, I went and, and I forget who was her coach, and that year we went, and I watched it, and I'm like, these guys are kind of weird. I don't know if you've ever gone to this place and watched it, but I'm like, hmm, okay, this is a very odd situation. The next year, my younger daughter wanted to get into it, there weren't enough coaches, and I thought to myself, well, how hard could it be to be a coach? Well, I have a whole new founder's set for teachers and coaches and all kinds of things like that now. I work in ERP, I do a lot of project management, I do a lot of software, I've been track to purchasing, and I can tell you that this is by far the best schooling I've ever seen for kids. So I would not only encourage you, I think the reason I came to Germantown was to give me the opportunity to, to have DI and learn about DI. It is project-based, these kids learn so many skills that I am going to tell you right now, if you look at it, you should actually put more money into it. You should look and see what, what Texas does, they make it elective, because it is amazing how much these kids learn. So I guess I want to tell you that I'm thankful that you've had it, I'm thankful I came to Germantown, I love the school district now, I feel just the same way. I tried to go back to Dominique Falls and get them engaged in it, they didn't take it up, so guess what? They're lost. We, we rock, right? So if you haven't been to one of them, if you haven't looked at it, I would encourage you to go out, look at what it really takes to go into this. These kids were, I, I leave three days a week, I'd say easily, for seven months. It is a huge time commitment, but if you watch them in the instant challenges, if you watch the brain power that they're using, this is real world, this is what's going to take you to the next level. So I would encourage you all to keep funding it, thank you for your time, and don't be afraid to put a little bit more, make it an elective. Thank you.
And yes, as we all know, the kids are our future, and if we don't give them the skills that they need, yeah, world won't be the same, so, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and presenting. Obviously, I think this board has, has supported the program and will continue to support the program. Obviously, it's fantastic to hear the experiences, you know, anytime we can shrink the world and bring it to Germantown and expand our borders and, and really push our kids' critical thinking skills to the max, that's how we continue to grow them exponentially, so thank you guys for all your work you do and the participation.
I just like to add, I concur with everything that everyone said. One of my sons was in DI, and when he was in elementary, he was described as painfully shy, and after a year of DI, he completely came out of his shell and was a different kid from then on. If you met him today, you would never see a child, a shy child that, you know, in elementary school was like that. He's completely outgoing, he's an entrepreneur, he's, he's on stage all the time, he does all of those things, he's very successful in what he wants to do. So I encourage any family that has any interest to get into it, and any child, even if you're nervous about it, do it, you're gonna get some unbelievable experiences. I agree. Thank you, Jill.
Is that your son, Brandon?
Brandon, of course.
But I'll, I'll just say one thing, it's not only just about feeling shy, it's, I mean, we still have shyer people on our team, right? But I think it's about the, the cohesiveness and the fact that there are so many different levels of a team. It's not just one person, and you have one that's an idea generator, you have, and so it, it really truly is applicable to the real world, at least from a business sense. I don't know about everything else, but everything I've done with it is.
That's true. It's like real world in that they all have different skill sets.
Yes.
That they bring to the plate, and it's okay to be shy because that person might be the builder, and then the other one is the.
Or the idea generator, or the one that.
And that's what the real world is. Yes.
Yep. Fantastic. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. We'll move on. Three C tax incremental district update, district administrator Steve Crackle is here to help walk us through this.
Well, thank you for inviting me. I don't think this will be quite as interesting or exciting as Destination Imagination.
We always put you after the students.
Yeah.
It's testing our, testing our critical thinking.
But there is some, some updates that the superintendent has invited me to share with the board here this evening. I, I sent over for the packet a couple of documents that I'll go through fairly briefly, and then I have one other one that I brought along, I had a hard copy to pass out. The, the first is a PowerPoint presentation. Ayler's is the village's financial advisor, and they made this presentation to the village board on July first about the, the proposed tax increment district amendment, and I'll start out with this, I won't go through it in as much detail as they did, but please, if you do have questions or want any more specifics, please jump in and let me know. First of all, just a little bit of background on tax increment district nine, that was a district that was formed a couple of years ago, and it focuses around the, the village's new Department of Public Works facility that will house all of those operations, and it was formed in, primarily as a, as a financial tool to help fund some of the infrastructure improvements that were necessary for the public works facility without having to put those on the property tax rolls. So, for example, if you look at the road, the roadwork that's being done on Donjust Bay Road right now, hopefully none of you have to use that or are doing convenience because it is closed at this point, but that road construction is being funded through the tax increment district. So instead of issuing levy-supported bonds that have to be paid back through the, the property taxes, that, that roadwork is being done and paid for in essence by the private sector development that's in that area. There was one previous amendment to TID nine. It started, we, you know, the village's approach to tax increment districts is to generally draw the border small and only include parcels that, that need to be included in those tax increment districts, and then if necessary, it is possible to go through this process to, to amend them. And in, in that case, actually, we go to the, the next slide real briefly, the, the parcels on the, on the, the lower, I guess we're all, I can't say left or right, can I? I guess it's the lower left-hand corner.
They're numbered, so.
Yeah, it would be.
Three sixty-two dash triple nine.
Yeah, two nine 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 and nine six six zero zero one were added, and that is, that was land that was purchased by Stonecast. They're a local Germantown company that produces concrete panels, and they've made some improvements there and are utilizing that. So adding those parcels increases the revenue that the TID is bringing in and shortens the, the length of time that the TID needs to be kept in place. So that was added a couple of years ago. Let me see, two, three months ago, I believe it was in May, we were approached by Sterling Pharmaceuticals. They're a company that is located just north of Donjust Bay Road by Washington Street. You're probably maybe familiar with, with their facilities there. They're one of the, one of the larger Germantown employers, one of the larger Germantown property taxpayers, and they are looking to expand their facilities to accommodate some increased production. Sterling Pharmaceuticals is a company that's headquartered in Cork, Ireland. The facility in Germantown is one of five facilities that they own, there's one in, in Cork, there's another one in Wales, there's one in North Carolina, I believe, if I remember correctly, one in the Netherlands, and then the Germantown facility. And they're looking to expand their production line for some new pharmaceutical products that they are under contract to produce, and as they were going through their internal processes to select which of those five facilities would be expanded to, to produce this new line of pharmaceuticals, one of the things that was looked at was what sort of, of incentives the units of government were willing to provide in order to encourage the, the, the expansion. Economic Development, Washington County, put together a package that is similar to what had been offered in past times to many of the companies that now have at the business park that was formerly Tax Increment District Four, which was roughly a thirty-three percent revenue share for a period of time with Sterling Pharmaceutical. And what that means is that during this period of time, they would get thirty-three percent of basically what they pay in in property taxes back in the form of an incentive payment for a period of roughly ten years or so. It works out to be about a total of three million dollars, and a portion of that is in the shape of an upfront loan from Economic Development, Washington County. Maybe going up to the next slide here, these next few slides kind of walk through the math that Ayler's prepared for us and, and just work out whether or not the, the cash flow works for the tax increment district. And in this chart, the most important things you can see in this, in the rectangular boxes across the top of the table are the different expansions that would take place. There's initial expansion, which would, construction would expect to be started towards the end of this year if the project goes through. There's a campus expansion that would follow a year or two later, a lab expansion within their current building, and then base six carry, expansion and carryover that would take place some, three or four years down the road. And the estimated values, property values that would be added to the increment or to the incremental district in each one of those phases is listed out here. It works out to be a total of forty-two million dollars. And I will say that Ayler's, when they take these approaches, as they should, take a very conservative approach. You know, generally, what we see in, in, in practice is that those values turn out to be significantly higher, so, but that, that was the assumption that went in. And then, and the next slide that shows the revenue that would come into the incremental district from each one of those phases, when the total, added up here, it's about four point, I need my glasses, four point two million in, in total from all five phases. And then at the end, when the, when the tax increment district is closed, then that revenue stream would then be allocated back out to the taxing jurisdictions. The next slide here is a much busier table and kind of an eye chart, but I think what's most important, if you look over on the right-hand column, you'll see a, a box shaded in green, and what that indicates, that this table calculates the estimated time when the tax increment district would be able to close. And you'll see that here, they show that it'll have collected enough revenue to be able to close in the year two thirty-five. I'm sorry, two thirty-seven. And the current TID nine closure date is twenty forty-two, so that takes five years off of the, the life, the necessary life expectancy of the tax increment district. So, so doing this would, going forward with this project, would facilitate the Sterling Pharmaceutical expansion, I'll talk about, a little bit more about that in a minute, the benefits of that to the community, and would also shorten the time that TID nine would have to be open, accelerate its closure. And then the final slide, this one is actually out of date, we have had some changes to the schedule. There is another handout that shows a more detailed timeline, but, but what I, instead of going through that detailed timeline, I'll just real quickly indicate that we're now planning the initial joint review board meeting in early September, probably around September ninth, we need to make sure we have a quorum available, and then that would put this on the village board meeting of September sixteenth, with then final approval looking at late September. So just about a month later than the timeline that was laid out on this presentation. I think there was also a map that is in the packet that looks like this, this shows what the new, what the new TID nine boundaries would look like. There would be three parcels that would be added shaded in, in, what is that, is that light green or light blue? My wife's not here to tell me.
Teal.
Teal, okay, I, I, if it's not in the box of eight crayons, I, I struggle, so. But in the, in the teal shading here is the, the area being added in. There are two parcels north of, of Donjust Bay Road. Two fifty-four nine seventy-three is the current Sterling Pharma location. And they would be expanding on that property as well as, as one of the future phases could include two fifty-four nine seventy-five. So those, those, that's where we expect to see the growth.
They, they own that?
They don't own that right now.
Who owns that?
Something that they're looking at as a, as a potential future phase.
Who, who owns that?
I don't recall the name of the company.
A business does, not a private citizen.
It's, it's not a, it's not a private, it is a business property.
Okay.
And then to the south, under state law, we, the borders of tax increment district have to be contiguous. So in order to connect this to the remainder of tax increment district now, we had to add three sixty-one nine seventy-six. That's currently owned by GFL, they have their recycling facility there. I don't expect any significant changes or modifications to their operations. This parcel is simply being added just in order to, to connect the Sterling Pharmaceutical property with the rest of the tax increment district. The last thing I'll say about the borders is, you know, we did look at other options for approaching this deal. Another, another alternative would have been to create a standalone tax increment district, tax, tax increment district ten, just around these Sterling Pharmaceutical properties. But the village board liked the alternative that's being presented since it would shorten the life of, of tid, tid district nine. And try to achieve the goal of closing the tax increment district out as quickly as possible. And then finally, I apologize for not having been able to send this over in digital format earlier. But I'm gonna pass out a, a copy of a report that was prepared by Economic Development, Washington County on the project. And presented to the village board. This shows basically their estimated costs and benefits related to the project. And I'll hit some of the highlights, on the front page, you can see that the, the project will result in a hundred and three new jobs over the next five years. The average salary of the jobs being added would be fifty-two thousand dollars a year. There would be a annual payroll of nine point eight million dollars and a total capital investment of about seventy-six point three million dollars. And maybe more importantly, and this doesn't come out very clearly in this report, is that this would really secure the foundation of Sterling Pharmaceutical in Germantown. That, you know, they were purchased by this other larger multinational company. And adding this function and expanding in Germantown will make them more competitive with other locations and help to ensure that, you know, not only is there, there this expansion. But also that, that those, those jobs and that presence here in Germantown is, is secured. The second page, it's on the back here, in very small type, I apologize for that. I think a lot of the younger staff maybe try to play a little games here that, that see how strong my reading glasses are. But that just propose, that provides some more detail on the structure of the deal that's being done. And then the, the final page with some charts and graphs shows the cost benefit analysis from both Washington County Village, Germantown. The other districts includes the school district and then the, the tid nine itself. And it does show a payback period of about nine point two years for the investment that the tid would make. And then the final note, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions, I did just wanna mention, and this is a, an item that has come up that, in some of the village board meetings. Economic Development, Washington County is a, an entity that is, is basically governed by Washington County. It's a spinoff that, that promotes economic development, obviously. They are governed by a board of directors that has a representation from the private sector and the public sector. There are, there are, at, at this time, there's no one from the village of Germantown on the board. Previously, village president Dean Walter had served on that. There, there are representatives from other communities in Washington County. One of the business representatives is Adam Kujev, who is the local manager for Sterling Pharma here in, in Germantown. We did have the village attorney review this to make sure that there weren't any conflicts or issues. And the, the, the board from, from Economic Development, Washington County does not, is not part of the loan approval process. They have a separate group that does review those loans and, and make those approvals. And the, Adam is not a part of that particular decision-making process, so in the, in the eyes of the, the village attorney, there were no conflicts of interest. But I guess in the interest of transparency, we wanna make that known to the board.
Appreciate that.
So with that, I, I know I went through a lot very quickly in the interest of time, but happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a few, I'm sure others do, let me get through a couple of mine here. A couple of us haven't been on the board when this, this tid was initiated, so if you can kind of walk us through a little bit of that. You gave us some historical context, so June of twenty twenty-two is when it was approved?
Yeah, yeah.
We've already seen one expansion since then?
Yes, yeah, the, the growth in the area has occurred more quickly than, than I thought was anticipated when we initially formed it. If, if you look at the map that's on the screen right now, initially it just, the, the tid only included the parcel three sixty-one nine ninety-one. In that, yeah, where the cursor is, is pointed right now.
That's three sixty-one nine seventy-eight.
Nine seventy-eight? No, okay, oops, I apologize. Sorry, my, uh, uh, a different, there's a different number on a different sheet here. But yes, that, that, it was initially just around that parcel. And again, if you're familiar with that area, you've seen that the developer was F Street, the construction management company was Keller. Another local firm constructed a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot light industrial building on that location. We amended it shortly after it was created because we, we, we learned shortly afterwards that Stonecast was buying the other parcels. To the west of the DPW site and making some improvements there. And the effort, the idea was to capture the increment from those improvements again in order to shorten the life of the tax increment district. So this third amendment, or second amendment would be to accomplish the same goal. Would capturing the growth from Sterling Pharmaceutical in order to reduce the, the life expectancy of the tax increment district by five years.
Okay, so that's the reason for the expansion, did we see that development take place in that secondary expansion?
Yes, Stonecast is in there, they're currently using the site, they, they made a, a land improvements, a lot of grading work, lighting. They're using the, the land as a, as a storage facility and a staging facility for their concrete panels. They may in the future, this is a little bit more of an unknown, they may add a production facility at that location sometime in the future, but, but that's not certain.
With the Sterling expansion, or potential expansion, the proposal numbers, I mean, obviously there's big numbers involved in this, but it's phased, right? So I'm assuming what you gave me on here is if all four phases come to fruition?
Yes, yeah, that, that does, the Economic Development, Washington County does include, does assume all.
Do they break it down by phase?
They do not, they do not. They do, Aylers does, if you, if you go back to the PowerPoint, that chart does break down the, the expansion by phases. So the initial phase would be the largest, that would be fourteen point eight million dollars. And then the campus expansion, which would follow shortly afterwards, is about two and a half million dollars. And again, you know, Aylers is, is reducing these values significantly from, in order to be conservative with their numbers. The lab expansion within their current building would be about five million dollars. And then that final base six expansion would be ten million dollars over, over probably two years.
What, what's the likelihood of those all occurring?
Fairly certain, and that is something that we're expecting to include in the development agreement with Sterling Pharmaceutical. Typically, when we, when we go through this process and we negotiate development agreements, we include penalties if they don't meet those phases. So if they, if they don't expand according to this timeline and to the extent that they've indicated, they won't get the full amount of the incentives that are, that are outlined.
And so then that includes that forty-two million you referenced earlier, that would be requisite of all phases being.
Correct, correct.
And then you gave us a thirty-three percent number that they, Sterling Pharma would receive?
Yes.
And that's indicative of three million dollars, that's the math on that?
Over the, over the course of the, of the, the agreement and the tax increment district, it would add up to be, depending upon how you look at, at, at discounting the cash flow. But roughly three million dollars.
So that, at what point did the village enter into this whole scenario, other than saying we expanded the area?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was the?
What, what point does the village incur an expense?
There would be no, there's actually no expense from the village on this. This is structured as, you might hear the phrase in tax increment districts, a Pago structure. Where basically the, the, the company, or the developer or the company in this case, only gets anything back if, if the construction takes place. So there's no upfront village expense here, there's no additional infrastructure being put in place. This is, you know, a straightforward, just a simple incentive to Sterling Pharma to expand, to do this expansion here in Germantown. Instead of over in Cork, Ireland or someplace else.
Sure, so if there's no upfront expense, what's the backend expense?
Simply the, the thirty-three percent incentive payment that goes to Sterling Pharmaceutical based on what increments they achieve.
How long does that go for?
That would go, I just wanna see if you can see it on this table here. If, yeah, if we go to that, that table, you can, you can see that, uh, the middle shows potential MRO from phase one. Potential MRO from phase, from campus twenty-six. And so there's, there's a, the MRO stands for municipal revenue obligation. So as they complete each one of these phases, then there is an obligation from the village to share a portion of future property tax revenue from that increment. And it would go until that, that obligation is, is accrued through twenty forty-three. However, what we have done in the past, like for example, tid four, for those of you might have been around for a while longer. We accumulate the cash and it actually pay that out, sort of like paying your mortgage off early and likely close in twenty thirty-seven. So the obligation is calculated out through twenty forty-three, the end of the tax increment district, but we would pay that out early in twenty thirty-seven.
So what would theoretically be three, three million dollars of tax revenue coming in to the municipality and its other agencies, right? We would be offloading to Sterling Pharma?
Well, I would say, you know, and it kind of goes into this, uh, uh, one of the questions that has to be analyzed and, and answered. As part of the tax increment district process is called the but for question. So we have to look at this from a legal perspective and say, would this development occur but for this incentive? And based on the information, the data that we have now, that we've shared with Aylers, that we've, that the village attorney has looked at, the answer to that question is no. So if, if the tax increment district was not formed, then the school district, the county, M A T C, and the village, we, we'd get a hundred percent of zero right away. We would, we would split that up and, and, but there's no increment there, there's no three million dollars there. So what the tax increment district does is it, it does defer when that revenue is, starts coming in to the other taxing jurisdictions and the village. And in this case, it would be until twenty thirty-seven. And at that, at, at that time, the tid would be closed and then the taxing jurisdictions would see that revenue stream.
But currently, because there's a tid there, it, it's not zero, right? Which is less than what would be if this was added?
Well, if, if this is added, if the Sterling Pharmaceutical parcels are, are added to tid nine. The amount that Sterling Pharmaceuticals is currently paying in property taxes will continue to go to the taxing jurisdictions as, as it does right now. So I don't know what that dollar amount is, but say it's a hundred thousand dollars, you know, sixty percent of that is gonna continue to go to the school district. It's only the additional increment on top of that that would go to the tax increment.
But my point is, as the tid's constructed right now, the taxing authorities would get a hundred percent of what that is, as it is right now, minus this expansion.
A hundred percent of.
The current structure.
Of the current structure, and that will, yes, that's the case, and that will continue even, even under this amendment. So the, the taxing jurisdictions will get one hundred percent of the existing.
So they get thirty-three percent of only what they bring to the tables far as development?
Only what comes from the expansion.
Okay.
Well, yes.
There's two properties there. So twenty, two fifty-four nine seventy-five.
Yes.
That's the property they don't own, but may potentially own.
Correct.
What part of the phases would be included in the purchase of that property?
That would be phase two. And, and the same thing is true of that parcel. Whatever, whatever they're paying in property taxes now continues to go to the taxing jurisdictions as it does.
So what's the rush to add that now until we know they've at least purchased the land for that development?
Theoretically, you could delay, theoretically it could be added in another amendment. There is a limit to the number of amendments that you can make to a tax increment district, I, I believe it's three. So that would limit future flexibility, there's an expense to going through the process. And, you know, there is, as, as much as you all enjoy, I'm sure you enjoy having me come and make these presentations, I would be back here again.
Anytime the village and us can interface is fantastic.
I, no, I, I, I think it's good, I, I enjoy.
Why?
I enjoy school board meetings, but.
I, I'm just wondering, so if they don't expand on that, then we have kind of a vacant property, is there opportunity for a different company?
It, it would be.
Or entity to.
Yeah, it would, it would be a, a different company could come in there, the company that's in there now could expand, you know, and as I.
But they wouldn't be subject to this thirty-three percent in that development?
They would not, if it's a different company, they would not be subject to that thirty-three percent.
We, we would know the four phases aren't happening as soon as that land isn't purchased by Sterling Pharma, right?
I think.
Or is that independent of?
I think it's, they're independent, they're independent.
So one, two, three, and four aren't necessarily the order it has to go in?
Well, and my understanding of their plans for that parcel, as they expand their production, they're gonna need more storage facility. They would prefer to have that site, and I think they will probably end up doing that, there's a lot of advantages to them to keeping that close. But let's say, for example, they're unable to work out a deal with, with, with the landowner. They could do that, they could store their supplies, materials, or product at another location. So they could theoretically skip that one and still expand their lab in phase, phase three, and then expand base six. and then expand base six at a later date as well.
So the thirty-three percent, basically the estimated three million dollars. EDW C is bringing initial million dollars to this project, correct?
One, one million of it will be in the form of a, of a loan from EDW C. That'll get paid off as part.
Upfront.
Yeah, and they'll get that cash upfront, and the debt will be paid off by the tax increment district as part of that, 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 that revenue sharing agreement.
Their, their argument for this is they need that million dollars to entice corporate to bring the business here?
It.
Or part, part of the proposal?
Yeah, yeah, the, the cash flow when expansion like this, that, that can be a significant factor for the company when they're making their locational decision.
So then that thirty-three percent, one million plus interest is paid back to the county?
Correct.
Or is it county's organization, EDW C?
Yep, yep.
So they won't receive all three million of that? They're technically going to receive one point whatever?
Yes, yeah, it's, and when you get into, again, the three million is, is, is a rough number.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just doing it because it's a number and people can understand the context of the conversation.
But some of that, a small portion of that will go to interest to EDW C, that's correct.
The million plus?
Well, the principal, they'll get, they'll get paid back. The, I mean, Sterling Pharma will get the three million dollars. So they'll get one million upfront, and then the rest of it will be paid off over time as a part of that revenue share. A portion of the proceeds from the TID will go to interest for economic development in Washington County. And actually, they won't receive it, the underwriters of the loan, the, the financial institutions that are loaning the money will receive it.
So that's a confusing way to say, they're going to get three million, but they're not going to keep all of it? Because some of it has to go back to EDW C, right? One, one million plus interest.
Though, well, they get to, they get to keep the one million dollars. So Sterling Pharma gets one million dollars upfront. And then, you know, again, if you, if you look at the, the chart that shows the payments.
So my question, I'll simplify it. My question is, it's not a loan then if they keep the million?
Correct. It's a forgivable loan, it's, Sterling Pharma's not paying it back, it's getting paid back.
So let's call that four million minus they have to pay, Sterling Pharma pays the interest or the TID pays the interest?
The TID pays the interest.
Okay, so we're losing the three million plus the interest to EDW C.
I think we're double counting the, the money, so there's, there's, there's a payment. It's really a timing factor for, from Sterling Pharma's perspective. They're getting three million dollars, they're getting one million dollars upfront in the, in the form of a loan that the.
That's forgivable.
That the tax increment district is, is paying, and it's forgivable if they meet these employment goals. They'll get another two million in, in revenue sharing payments over the course of the, of the tax increment district.
And then the TID also pays the interest of the initial million, not Sterling Pharma?
Right, right, so you could look at that, that's a benefit to Sterling Pharma.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at money in, money out, so there's three million out.
Yeah.
Plus interest.
Plus interest on that one million dollar loan.
Which I'm assuming is, I don't know, what's the percentage of the loan?
It would be about forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, no, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, I read the wrong column there. That's, that's annual, that's the annual interest on the loan the first year. It's about a half a million dollars in interest.
So then we're losing three point, should say losing, three point fives out the door on this.
Yeah, and I guess we're, we're, I think there's a, maybe a little bit difference in the way that, that I would look at it, is we're not losing three and a half million dollars because without the tax increment district, there's no three and a half million dollars to begin with. The expansion doesn't happen, there is no, there is no additional revenue coming in.
There's no possible way that expansion happens without this?
I don't believe so.
Well, we can keep moving. I just wanted to clarify that, because I guess I was confused when I listened to the, the meeting on the first, and the discussion was being had about what thirty-three percent is, there wasn't context around dollar amounts, I'm glad we have that now. And then that, that percentage, that meeting made it sound like Sterling Pharma was on the hook for the percentage back, but actually the village in the TID is on the hook for the.
Yeah, the village is paying that.
So, so that's the bad, when I say there's no front end for the village, the back end is what we just discussed.
Right.
Okay. It's, and I appreciate you bringing, this was brought to my attention pretty quickly, the shared, the board of directors. And that conversation got a little cloudy there in the first, as far as who was representing who and what interests were at hand and being discussed. I think EDW C did most of it. To me, it presented as if it was on the behalf of the village. Actually, they're on behalf of their own interests spurring this for the county. Sterling Pharma's in it, and I can get, we can say that they're not directly tied to the decision, but I would have a hard time thinking someone from the board, directors there, who initiated, according to what you were saying, they initiated this conversation of needing this to potentially spur this growth?
Yes, I believe they initially contacted Christian Cheslock from Economic Development, Washington County, and said they were looking to do this expansion and, but were competing with other locations and wanted to know.
Sure.
What type of partnerships.
I think everyone can understand why you would have that conversation, right? So is this, this land, this is locked in?
The, the borders here?
What we have in front of, because this wasn't presented at the village, they actually had no understanding of what plots, other than Sterling Pharma's that were going to be involved. There was some loose conversation that it could potentially be this one, and then they didn't know about surrounding. And that was EDW C's words were saying, some of the lines of interest of surrounding properties to Sterling Pharma.
This is, this is something that the joint review board will, will, will look at and vote on, it is not locked in.
So this could, this could change between now and approval?
This could change, yeah.
Do we see any conversation around that right now?
You know, at this point, there won't be any more conversation until the plan commission and the joint review board meet on this topic. I mean, it is open for discussion. These draw, these lines were drawn based on the direction from the village board, not only on this TID, but others, to minimize the properties to only those that are necessary. You know, I think, you know, there are other alternatives that, that could be looked at. You know, there is, there's that square property right next to three sixty-one, nine seventy-six, south of Donjes Bay Road, right there. And that is one where, you know, it, it, there's no specific development proposals for that property at this point. However, it is an underutilized facility. There are probably some brownfield issues with it. And, you know, you could make an argument for adding that to the tax increment district in order to attract some additional development there. It, it, and see if there was a package of both TID financing and brownfield money that could be put together to, to try to, to try to make some improvements to that location. There's a kind of, sort of triangular shaped properties also south of Donjes Bay Road. That is one that could also be added to the tax increment district. However, that one is a residential property at this point. There's an older house on the site. And again, typically, the, the village board doesn't look to add residential properties to TIDS unless the property owner is, is seeking to, to become a part of it. And, and that's not the case here. So, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go any further to the northwest. You know, largely, that area is already developed with, that was, that was part of the old TID four. That was closed four or five years ago, and I don't really see a need to, to add any other properties there. So probably, you know, the two that you could add are the two I just mentioned. Like you mentioned earlier, you can make an argument for not including two, two fifty-four, nine seventy-five right now. And, you know, that would be an option that the joint review board, plan commission, and village board could consider.
Yeah, I think, and you provided some pretty good clarification as to why it might be ahead of time. So your understanding is there's only three allowed amendments?
I'd have to go back and double check. I know there is a limit, off the top of my head, I'm going to say it's three.
So after this, most likely, there's only one more kick at the can.
You know, and normally, we don't like to do this many amendments to, to TIDS, you know, especially this early in, in their lives, but.
Yeah, this is only two years, right?
Yeah, 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 and this is not something that I would say is typical or, or, or something that we would normally try to, not try to do with TIDS. This one in particular, and, you know, I'll, I'll say, as, as we looked at this, you know, we did look at that option of just having a standalone, but, and that still is an alternative. That's something, you know, for example, the school board, if you wanted, you could direct your representative to suggest to the joint review board that you create a standalone TID. That would be an alternative that, that, that could be considered by the joint review board. The reason the village board didn't go that route is because they wanted to try to close TID nine earlier, and that's the, the benefit of going this way.
How many years is that?
It takes five years off of, off of TID nine.
And that's five years if all the phases happen?
Correct.
And what if only phase one happens?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be quite five years, I, we haven't run those calculations, but probably a year and a half, two years.
Okay. If, if phase one, we're thinking.
If phase one, we're the only phase.
Probably a little bit more than, because percentage wise, that was the biggest financial commitment, right? I guess I have some questions on TID impacts. So we say there's no cost to the village. How does TID impact the taxpayer?
There's, so if you're talking about the, the typical residential taxpayer, and actually, really anybody, the TID has no impact on their particular property tax bill when it's formed. So if we take TID nine, for example, all of the additional, the debt that's been taken on by TID nine for Donjes Bay Road, for, it's called Town Nine Road, the new road that goes in by the D P W facility, all of the, the debt for those TID-funded projects are paid for by the incremental property taxes from the, the properties within the, the tax increment district. So there's no, no impact on, on those, on, on other property taxpayers within the village. Sometimes, you know, I think people will raise the question or, or say, well, but what if these developments went ahead without the tax increment district? But that's one of the questions that we specifically look at is, will this happen without the, the creation of the tax increment district? So just in more general terms, let's take, for example, TID eight, that's the, the TID up by, up north of Holy Hill Road. The answer to is no, that development would not have taken place without the creation of TID eight because there was no water and sewer serving that area. All, every one of those businesses that's been built up there, every one of those buildings requires water and sewer service. And without the TID to extend water and sewer service up to that area, that development would not have taken place. Same thing is true in TID nine, if you look at the, the new building that went up on the corner of Donjes Bay and Wazaki, that building would not be there without water and sewer service, which was not, which did not extend that far east before TID nine was created. And that infrastructure was put in place for that facility. In this case, and it can be, it's a little bit less concrete for something like Sterling Pharma, but looking at, and, and we did look into the other sites that Sterling Pharma does own in other locations, and there are other sites that are capable of this type of expansion. I know that one of them in particular is in Ireland. If you look, Ireland has done, done a lot to create tax breaks and incentives for the pharmaceutical industry. So that reduces their, their costs for that location, so in order to be competitive. This was a case where, without this incentive, this expansion would not take place here. So that's a, that's an important question that gets asked every time a TID is formed, every time there's an amendment to the TID, is would this development take place but for this incentive or this infrastructure investment? And I'm not going to say that that answers, that that answers, answered, that question is answered correctly in every TID, in every jurisdiction in the state.
Sure.
But it is on TIDS.
There's financially disastrous TIDS in this country. I'm not saying these are the, by any means.
And, and there are, they do get misused at times, they do, there are bad decisions that are made, but, but that's not the case here.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Go ahead.
Forget about whether or not the development would happen or not. If the development does happen, without a TID, does the taxpayer benefit?
If the development happens without a TID, yes.
Yes, and how, how long does it take for that taxpayer to see that benefit?
If, if it happens without a TID?
Yeah, it's immediate, right? Okay, and with the TID, they have to wait for that TID to close?
Right, until the cost that needed to be incurred for that development to take place are paid off.
That's all I need, thank you.
So I'm struggling a little bit with the cost to taxpayer.
Okay.
That there isn't one. As far as tax levy, what is the TID's impact on the tax levy? How is it calculated?
The, the tax increment district is included, is included, that levy is included in the Village of Germantown's levy. So when that's levied out, it's calculated, and, and the rate is, is, includes the, includes the, the levy portion for the tax increment district.
So then, if the development within the TID, the valuations of those properties raise faster than the external areas of the TID, the external areas of the TID are now on the hook for the internals of that TID, as far as the tax levy, correct?
If, if the, the tax levy goes up beyond, if, if, if the tax levy goes up and it includes the, the, if the general tax levy includes the levy from the tax increment district. In Germantown, the practice of the village board has been, so, so if you listen to our budget discussions, you'll hear the conversation about the, the levy limit TID in versus levy limit TID out. And what the village board has done is take that TID levy out so that that doesn't occur. Otherwise, there would be, there would be a small impact on property taxpayers if, in Germantown, if the village board didn't do that.
So if you use the numbers that are current, there's no, you're saying it's neutral?
Correct, the way the village, the way the Village of Germantown has used the tax, tax increment districts, there's no impact on, on residential property taxpayers.
I don't believe that to be factually true.
Okay.
Chris, I don't know if you can pull that up for me. I did that math based off of the filings of the village, and there's actually a three hundred ninety-seven dollar a year increase in the tax bill for a four hundred twenty-five thousand dollar property. In the years prior to this, this is twenty twenty-three. So if we, I, I did it for the last three years, and it's corresponding with what I'm seeing developmental wise within the TIDS, it's almost a hundred dollars less than that the year before, which would coincide with what we've seen up in, was it TID, of the Holy Hill district areas, where we're seeing most of that, which obviously is significant impact to those, the valuation of the properties internally to the TID there.
Well, if you'd like to send me that, I'd be happy to take a look at it. But I'm not going to be able to respond to that this evening.
We could send that over, I can send you the three years, if you scroll up by this one. So this is what we're talking about, what Craig was talking about, as far as the tax levy, the entire Village of Germantown, this map is in Germantown, use it as an example. Creates this tax levy, the thirty-eight point seven million value in the TID is excluded from it, and then the external, the village is on the hook for that. So you're saying you, Bud, you alter that levy at that point?
See, and that is, the case is, I'm looking at the, the top of the screen here. It says, because the TID is used to set the tax levy, property in the, in the tax should be included in the tax rate formula. And the village does not. And the village does not include TID in our net net new construction numbers when we set our budget.
Okay, can you scroll down again? So this top rate is what it would be, that thirty four, forty seven, eighty seven. If, that's what it currently is, this is the math, these are the numbers I pulled. If I exclude the TID, right, on the initial levy, the bottom number fifty nine, fifty is what we get. That's that's where I'm, I'm having a hard, these are, these are live numbers I'm using from the villages reporting to the state.
Okay, I I would have to take a look at these numbers.
So my concern on that is when the discussion's being had, that there's no cost to the village upfront, that's true, and on the back end, there's a little money going out that we don't realize, right? Because there's other other investment coming back, or other revenue coming back in. But in the meantime, that's what the taxpayers are on the hook for, and that's an average mean house, forty, four hundred twenty five thousand.
If you send me that, I will check the numbers.
Okay, we can send it over. I just, this is the information when I start looking into some of these things, and I'm trying to figure out the totality of the discussion, which was kind of lacking on the first. This helps the citizen understand the impact. I think it does. We can send it over, I could send you.
I would appreciate that.
Perfect.
It's always helpful to be able to take a look at numbers before you're asked to to comment on them.
I'm just, if the comment is that you calculated without that, right? But I'm showing you the numbers with it.
I haven't seen these numbers until you put them up on the screen. I came here tonight, I gave all of my numbers in advance and shared everything. And I think if you want to have good communication between the village and the school district, I think that's the appropriate way to handle this.
I would love to. I think this board would love to.
Yeah, I would have really appreciated to see that before I was asked to comment on it in a public meeting.
I could understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I actually have one. The numbers are the numbers, you know. We've done the math here in Germantown for the land, the expansion, et cetera. Cork has done probably the same sort of thing with the buying of land. I'm assuming it's going to be roughly similar, so buying of land, building out, expanding. But you mentioned something that caught my ear with regards to, in theory, they could still do some of their own development to build the facilities to store the chemicals. Numbers are numbers, but what we're dealing with, and this isn't a US state to US state comparison, this is a US versus, I believe Ireland is part of the EU, but even at that, different country. Like I said, I don't, I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this question, but this is one that that popped into mind. How was the idea, how available are these chemicals in Ireland or the EU versus the US? Is there cost involved if they don't do the development here and they do it in Ireland? How does that impact the import of these chemicals if they're not readily available? I know the EU can be very strict with what they import. It's those type of things because obviously if we just simply take buying property and building out the structures and putting the people in, those are easy numbers to calculate. But for instance, if this is a worldwide chemical, there really is no issues, then then obviously it's it's the cost there versus the cost here. But if this is a chemical that's produced in the US that they bring in here in Germantown and use, there's a cost there, but what's the cost to in totality of if it's not Israeli available? If there's import taxes, other fees that the EU may charge? Because that's, when you're dealing with that sort of thing and the transport of it from here to there or from wherever to there, that's not being reflected at all in this. And so I, believe me, I understand the internal competition, country. I've experienced it myself, but it's from a more intellectual standard rather than physical or chemical. So that would be my takeaway from this is certainly not that I don't believe Cork and Germantown are competing internally and they're looking at these numbers going, where can we get the most benefits and incentives? But I think there's, in this specific case with with the idea of chemicals, I think that adds something that is not reflected at all in these numbers as far as, you know, okay, Cork, you're you're trying to draw them over with a little bit more incentive. Go ahead and do the math on the chemicals. They may be still better off from a company perspective to do the work here without the incentives.
You know, first of all, I'm not an expert in the pharmaceutical industry. But from the information that that village staff went through with Sterling Pharmaceutical and Economic Development, Washington County went through with Sterling Pharmaceutical, the biggest cost drivers for what they're producing, for the pharmaceuticals they're producing are labor and facilities. So for example, you know, the the expansion that's taking place here, it's it's not changing the footprint of of the building at all, but the the tanks, the vats that that this production process takes place in are made out of a very expensive and special metal alloy that has to be extremely nonreactive, so that when they're, when they're, when they're making the medicine, you know, in these vats, that there's no opportunity for contamination from the from the production facilities. So I think that's one of, that's that's a major cost factor. And the labor is the other major cost factor. While chemicals certainly are costing, I don't know where they're produced or I, but I don't believe that that's as significant. It's not like, I'm trying to think of a parallel, you know, even producing lithium batteries where you gotta have a source of of the right minerals that are available. I I think it is, it's the facilities and the labor which are really driving the cost.
I have a quick question. So you have to connect to a TID, correct? That's why you're including three sixty one, nine seventy six. And then possibly the square, which is two fifty four, nine seventy five. Currently, they're on the levy, right? Those two companies or whoever's there. When they're included in the TID, if the the expansion happens to be able to get up to the top one, what what's the benefit to them?
To them? Uh, there's no benefit, no change.
They continue to pay taxes, they continue to do everything. So do you just say now you're part of a TID?
Well, I mean, there really isn't any impact on them. They, there's there would be a notification, but generally, they're not particularly interested.
Was brought up earlier, how many times can a TID be amended? That number is four, just for the record.
And is it for the span of the TID or every so many years?
A municipality may complete a territory amendment change to a TID boundaries up to four times during the TID's life. This is the same information that was presented to the board.
Correct.
The village board. I was there that night, and I, a trustee asked a question about how does a hundred and three jobs times fifty two thousand come up to nine point eight million? Can you elaborate that? Because this math doesn't math.
Well, I believe that the fifty two jobs is only in is only relates to the the new jobs that are being added. I think, I believe if I remember correctly, that Economic Development, Washington County was looking at the overall payroll of Sterling Pharma.
All right, it seems misleading then to have that nine point eight million figure on here. If you're talking about a hundred and three new jobs, and then you say nine point eight million payroll, someone's going to think that you're adding nine point eight million in payroll with this TID when it's actually five point three.
It's on my document.
I understand. I think it just, it would be clearer to anyone reading this if you had that changed.
I know it's not your document. The hundred and three jobs, they're not stating that they're going to be a hundred and three Germantown jobs. They're just a hundred and three jobs in the whole company. So there could be a new manager in wherever they're.
That would be a question for EDWC, but I believe that hundred and three is in Germantown. And when when EDWC does a loan, provides a loan, it is tied to job creation at the facility. So it's not jobs someplace else, it's jobs here, and that's why I would believe that this hundred and three jobs would be in Germantown.
I mean, if they're anticipating spinoff jobs, like if they think a shopping mall is going to get developed right next door to it, and you're going to have eighty five additional jobs from that, okay, then I can see the nine point eight million, but just, like I said, the math doesn't math.
You may want to invite Christian Cheshlock to come to a meeting and and address those questions to him.
Okay, and then my last comment goes back to something you mentioned, you brought up that the village attorney reviewed the EDWC board members. Even though they don't legally see a conflict of interest, publicly, I I think there absolutely is a conflict of interest that you have the EDWC giving a million dollar forgivable loan. Here's a check for a million, keep it, to a company that's represented by a member of their executive board and their board of directors. That, I don't see how that's not a conflict of interest. And I don't expect you to have any response, because I know you're a village attorney.
I didn't hear a question.
Yes, there wasn't one, I'm just making a statement.
Tom's point, this is, I mean, you're here as the representative of the village, this isn't directed at you. You weren't there that night. I didn't receive your numbers till today. We're all busy people, but this is just something we came, I came up with. As far as doing my research, as an investigator for twenty years, I kind of do the totality of investigation to the best of my ability. I did a lot of learning in this. You provided a lot of insight tonight into the thought process, I think. The initial discussion, you were very forthcoming about some of the the things that were going on. I think we just want more clarification around some of the stuff we're hearing within the village as far as either misunderstanding of information, misinformation, however we want to classify all of that that we get hit with as board members and your board gets hit with. I know I've been on the phone with some of your board members, hey, what's going on with this? What's the story? Can you fill me in? Can you help us understand this? The fact is, we have a TID, right, and how do we make it? I fundamentally, I'm on the record, I disagree with that style of management, but I'm not the only person that gets a vote in that, right? So then what do we do to financially make it as successful for the village as possible? That's the other question. And maybe if I'm in a different seat, I look at it for potential, come to a different conclusion or answer. When I see these kinds of numbers and we say that, and I have taxpayers asking me, what what's this whole TID thing about? What does it mean to me? Well, I can't answer them. Uh, the TID pays X percentage of a one million dollar forgivable loan, right? They don't understand, what they do understand is, is my tax bill higher or lower? And that's the blunt question we get, right? How did this affect my dollars in a time of record inflation with all the other stresses going on in a in a household? That's what we're dealing with. So I I understand some of the frustration there. These, these are the things we work out throughout an investig, I look at it as an investigation, any question that's asked of me, and we come kind of through with some of the information. If I'm wrong on that, I would love to be wrong on that, but.
And I I don't mind answering questions or looking at things, I just, I I just need to take a look at it and have have a little bit of time to work through it. Happy to, you know, talk with you after I get a chance to take a look at that, happy to come back to another meeting if you'd like. You know, I, you know, actually, and if there is more interest in having conversations about tax increment districts and and all that, you know, I'd be happy to invite ailer's to a meeting to talk a little bit more about it. They can speak with with more expertise on the topic than I can. When it comes to some of the questions on, you know, the economics, I'm sure that that Christian Cheshlock from Economic Development, Washington County, would be happy to come to a meeting. I think all of us who work on this, you know, and we understand the frustration, there's a, there's a lot of misinformation really on both sides of of the TID issue. There's, there's oftentimes when I read things or people send me articles, there's a lot of generalizations, you know, that that get made that that are sometimes true but not always true. So I I think having that dialogue would be helpful, and I'm happy to participate in it. I apologize if I seem frustrated or, but.
Fully understand. You're the agent, you're the person in front of us. Fortunately, I don't know if Dean would want to come down and explain some of this, maybe. I've been trying to get that to work out, but we'll, we'll see. We'll keep, we'll keep plugging away at that.
Since we're getting deep in the weeds, I thought I'd ask, is there any studies that are done on the impact of having a TID district? So meaning, we're increasing jobs, hopefully that brings in more revenue to the community, that helps our businesses. Is there any study on how that affects us? I mean, does that increase tax revenues throughout the district? Are we going to build more houses? You know, all of those things kind of play into this. Is that part of what we're looking at when we create this type of a TID district? But I guess the concern that we have as a board, as a school district, is you bring in more employees, you potentially bring in more students that could tax us as far as space and not necessarily getting the immediate revenue, having more students and we're busting at the seams. And there isn't a good way for us to get more money to build a school without going to the taxpayers once again and saying, hey, we need to build a new school because we have, you know, fifty new kids coming in next year. And we don't get the tax revenue for possibly twenty years coming in. That's kind of the the gist of what the problem is. So is there any study that's being done with this to show that we're going to increase tax revenues? Our businesses are going to be giving the city more money, all of those things along with, along with it?
You know, from an academic perspective, you know, there have been a a lot of generalized studies with with, you know, I've looked at these in in actually many years now. But there have been like more generalized studies about that, of tax increment districts in not only Wisconsin, but other states and how they're utilized and what those economic impacts are. There hasn't been anything done like on a local level looking at that. I would say that one of the the policies that the village board is following, it's really not a policy, it's not something that's adopted, but one of the the ad hoc or unofficial policies is that they have not in the past used tax increment district funding for residential development. And I think, you know, to a great extent because of of what you've just mentioned, that the acknowledgement that residential development comes with people and families, and families come with kids. And, you know, there is more of an expense from that perspective. I I wouldn't say that that's something, that may, there may be something come up in the future that the village board may take a different approach on it. And I think that would be a conversation that the the school board and the village board would want to have at that time. But generally, what we're seeing, you know, anecdotally, is that these most of the businesses that are coming in now have a relatively small number of employees. There's a great deal of automation, there's a high, high amount of of value, but but a relatively low number of employees. So, you know, for example, with the building that originally went up is Briggs and Stratton, that big warehouse, seven hundred thousand square foot warehouse up on Holy Hill Road, has about forty employees in it, spread over three shifts. It's, they have, you know, robotic distribution robots in in place that are, you know, picking up pallets and and bringing them in trucks. You know, it's it's a relatively low number of people that are that are working there. Some of the other businesses, Dielectric, for example, Golden Pet do have a higher number of employees, but but generally, we're seeing fewer people involved and much more machinery and equipment and facilities. I will also say that, you know, we have had conversations with with staff about housing development. I mean, whether it's in a TID or not, I think that has impacts on on the school district. And I know that one of the things, I think we've had a little issue with logistics, but we are trying to get somebody from the school district to start being a part of plan commission meetings because of that. And I think that's an important conversation to have, that that, you know, when that res, when when residential development comes, is it, is it going to, how is it going to affect the school districts and how can the village help to subminimize that impact?
Yeah, and I think the problem there is density, you know, if we're going to be building five thousand unit apartment complexes, that's different than single family homes. That would be our concern.
Well, kind of to pile on with that, like it says, the fifty two thousand is an average annual salary. So when you take an average annual salary and you're adding a hundred and three people. So, when you take an average annual salary and you're adding a hundred and three people, you could have a broad, you know, you got ten people coming in making, you know, two hundred thousand, then you have a whole bunch of minimum wage jobs, which it kinda would be nice to see the rundown of what that, those hundred three jobs looks like as far as the salaries, because if you're bringing in a bunch of, um, minimum wage jobs that now can't afford to live in the district, now, now that affects what kinda housing you're gonna have to build in the district in order to be able to accommodate, you know, a whole workforce that isn't making, you know, either fifty-two thousand, which is, you know, it sounds good except for when we see what the cost of living is now, that isn't actually very, um, what would be the other word? It's not necessarily livable in a community when you're looking at maybe fifteen hundred dollars a month just rent now, not much less buying a home. So, it'd just be interesting to see what the breakdown of their, what they're looking at as far as adding employees.
That is something, I don't have that with me, and I, I, I don't remember the numbers off, off the top of my head, but I know Economic Development, Washington County is part of their analysis, did, did look at the, the distribution, and that is something that, um, you know, again, if, if you, if you'd like whether it's on this or more general topics, I'm sure, uh, they would, you know, be more than willing to come and, and get into a more detailed presentation on that.
It's just the type of jobs matter.
Yeah.
This is the same, we just got a, you know, a hundred and three jobs.
Yeah.
I appreciate you bringing up the, the planning commission seat. Um, the, uh, President Walter and I have had some conversations back and forth dating back to June on that, and there's an application in. Sounds like, um, Ms. Ott, the clerk, is, has got things rolling.
Yeah.
We're waiting to hear back on that. Um, in, in, in similar fashion, we've offered a seat on our Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Okay.
Uh, we do have, uh, capital improvement stuff that's going on, you have an, um, RFP, RFI out to, um, RFP out to.
Long range facility.
That came in now?
It came in, we are reviewing it on Monday.
It sounds like we'll talk about that next month, we're hoping to get an actual village board member into that seat to help facilitate that conversation. Realistically, the conversation is the last thing we wanna do is invest in Amy Bell and find out all the housing goes up to Rockfield. That, that would be the nightmare situation, right? So, that's the point of increasing this communication and dialogue firsthand, and if we can get a member from each board in each direction, I think we can only exponentially build that relationship.
I, I think that would be very helpful, because it, uh, it doesn't do anybody any good, um, to have proposals come forward and, and then, you know, find out later that there's issues with them, and, um, uh, and it, it, you know, developers don't like that either, they don't wanna come forward and say, hey, we're planning a development here and invest time and money into putting together a proposal and then find out, well, hey, there's, there's not enough room in the school that, that, that's served by this area. So, yeah, I, I think, I agree a hundred percent, I think that communication would be helpful to everybody.
Fantastic, we'll, we'll work on both ends of the candle on that.
All right.
Be in the middle at some point here.
All right, that sounds good.
I've got one more. Promise it'll be quick. Can a TID be structured in such a way that the school district portion of improvements can be pulled out immediately while the remainder stays in there to help fund the TID infrastructure?
I don't believe that it can be structured that way. Um, the, the reason that I'm, I'm hesitating is, is if, you know, what might be possible under some conditions would be if we were, for example, if, if there was a housing component in a future TID at some point, and, and, um, maybe there could be in a development agreement, something worked out to provide some sort of, of, uh, financial support for the school district, or, uh, some sort of a contribution. Uh, but I think to strictly answer your question, I don't believe that, that it can, the TID itself can be structured that way.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, I appreciate you coming in, I know it was a little bit of fodder in your direction, we, we appreciate it.
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm always happy to answer questions, and, um, uh, I really do believe in the communication and, um, and trying to improve that, and, uh, um, you know, anytime that you would like me to come in and give an update, even if it's not related to a specific amendment, I'm happy to do that.
Fantastic, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Well, that's item three. Um, does anybody need a break in there, I know I had to escape for one, I apologize for that, does anyone wanna break? Like, very quickly here, or wanna keep going? Everyone's good? All right. For citizen comment, um, I have one. It's gonna be Scott Heffley, I can read this long paragraph, if you'd like me to, I think you understand the process, three minutes, please don't, uh, disparage anybody directly in the room. And we appreciate you coming, it's been a while. Yeah.
Just, just talk, you don't have to lead the way.
Good, okay.
Scott Heffley, uh, W one five nine, in one of five, in Portlboro, Germantown. Germantown, so I wanna thank you guys for restructuring, so I can come to your meetings, and I saw some of you board members came to the village board meeting where I spend most of my free time. So, I appreciate the fact that that came to fruition after years of people bringing it up, and I knew you had to restructure things to do that, so thank you for that, because you talk about communication, you gotta be able to come and see what's going on, and they come to see what's going on, so, and I, and I've seen you there, you guys there, so. Um, I appreciate that, I, I would, I can't sit here and answer questions about TIDS, I'd sure love to, um, because I'm not on the agenda, but, um, I have a concern about us, we seem to be really pushing hard with TIDS, and it's faster than the growth rate would say that we should. I have a big issue with that, I'm a financial guy like Mr. Brown, same industry, I've been studying economics and all this stuff for years, and it just, you can do whatever you want to, you can do whatever TIDS you want to, but in the end, the school district is the one that has to wait for their money. And our costs and your costs go up every single year dramatically, and your labor costs go up. And you just can't go out and borrow money like the village can, they can borrow money all day long, and you guys can't do that, so that's why I'm a little sensitive when it comes to TIDS, I don't, I think they're a tool, yes, but they're being way overused in this village, and I will stick to that until someone proves me wrong. And if there is one for residential, be very wary of that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Item five, consent agenda. It'll be five, A, approval of June tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes, B, approval of July first, twenty-four meeting minutes, open session only, C, approval of teacher resignations, D, approval of teacher contracts, E, approval of donations. Do we have anything in there we'd like to pull out and have a separate conversation?
I'd, I'd recommend a motion to approve consent, and then second, and then a full discussion on specific items.
Make a motion to approve consent to gen items A through E.
Second.
Mr. Barney, what's the motion, Mr. Pollak, what's the second? Any discussion?
I'm happy to publicly note the, uh, I think use the word multiple times, I think exponential donations we have this evening.
Please do.
Uh, the following donations this evening, this month are Big Sky Country, one thousand dollars to the Germantown High School Poms team, Cousin Subs, one thousand dollars to Germantown High School Poms, MGS Manufacturing, a thousand dollars to High School Poms, and Shavell Smith Bell Salon, five hundred dollars to the High School Poms team, Westbury Bank, two hundred and fifty dollars to the girls swim and dive, Andy Burl, five hundred dollars to Germantown Girls Swim and Dive, Jack Seemoss Trucking Incorporated, one thousand dollars to Girls Swim and Dive, Gelf Food and Beverage, five hundred dollars to Girls Swim and Dive, um, NY two LA Sports, five hundred dollars to High School Athletics, Three and Two Baseball Booster Club, one thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and eighteen cents for screens, hitting mats, and coaches gear to the High School baseball program, Three and Two Booster Club, seventy-five hundred dollars towards new high school, um, boys duckouts on the varsity field. Fleet Farm gave us two thousand bottles of water, um, Soccer World of Brookfield, five hundred dollars to the boys soccer team, affiliate dermatologist, five hundred dollars to the high school boys soccer team, Wenland Nursery, five hundred dollars to the high school boys soccer team, Corona Lodge Center, two hundred and fifty dollars to high school boys soccer, there was an anonymous donor, one thousand dollars to the high school boys soccer team, MGS MG, MFG Group Incorporated, one thousand dollars to Germantown High School Boys Soccer, and pet supplies plus seven hundred and fifty dollars to Germantown High School Boys Soccer.
That's outstanding.
Fantastic, sure, soccer gave it a run, but, uh, I would not mess with Poms and Swim and Dive, they, they are.
Baseball's coming on strong.
Ah, man, I, it's amazing, some of the, the, the ability of their fundraising, that's fantastic, so we appreciate that greatly. Um, I guess I'd like to touch on resignations and contracts, I didn't get to attend that personnel meeting. Um, net in and out, if you can just kinda cover the.
Um, let's, I'll, I'll explain it this way, resignations, at the point of the personnel meeting, we had three resignations, there's one new one since. Um, there are two of those resignations, uh, there's a, the, the, copy the liquidated damages clause below, two of those resignations um, are in that window of, of needing to pay liquidated damages. To this point, we haven't received those payments, to my knowledge, um, and therefore I would recommend, um, approving them pending the payment of liquidated damages.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, and then relative to contracts, um, I have to flip over here.
Too busy time for your office, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
In the la- July to August?
There are thirteen contracts, um, I believe at the point of the personnel committee meeting, I think we had eleven that came forward. Um, there, um, for a variety of reasons, um, some of them were discussed, that personnel relative to, in some, in, for example, in one case, it's a, it's an employee that's been in our district that's simply changed workloads from professional technical to teaching force. We felt that was an appropriate move. Um, uh, some are due to vacated, uh, vacant positions that we filled. Um, we feel very good about the teachers that we're bringing in, our principals are working very hard to, uh, find quality candidates that will be a good fit, and and get the opportunity to meet with them.
One thing I noticed is most are not base pay, which would indicate to me prior experience.
That is accurate.
That's always a good thing to see.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, Mr. Noack, discuss making a change in the motion pending liquidated damages.
Yeah, yeah, I'll.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we didn't move forward.
Yeah.
I think that's appropriate to do, make that clarification, right?
Yeah. Uh, before I cut you off, do you have anything else on that? No, I just appreciate not seeing too many bas in there, not that new, new people to the, the business are bad, but it's nice to get that experience coming in, I think that says something about the district as a, as an attractive place for experienced personnel to come, so. Thank you, we're gonna, let's work on that.
I will make a motion to amend the original motion to state that teacher, teacher resignations are only approved once liquidated damages are paid, if applicable.
I'll second it. Mr. Barney with the amended motion, Mr. Pollak with the second, any discussion? Everybody's good with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion, or the amendment passes, and we'll return back to, um, the initial motion, or the, now, what is the amended motion, right? Um, any further discussion before we take action here? On the agenda, okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also passes, consent agenda. Thank you for walking us through that. Uh, policy committee, we have Mr. Barney.
Yes, uh, policy committee met on June twenty-fourth. Uh, the first new business item that we discussed was a proposed new policy supplementary instructional materials. This was brought to committee only for discussion, to develop expectations and processes regarding the use approval publication uh, of supplementary instructional materials. So, no action was taken at that June twenty-fourth meeting, but I expected to come back to our next committee meeting. Uh, the bulk of the meeting was around a batch of updates from Neola, uh, twenty-two revisions and one new policy. I'll give you a couple of updates or highlights. Uh, the conflict of interest policy was updated to show that board members can serve as voluntary bus drivers. Uh, the clerk policy was revised to clarify the duties of the clerk based on changes in state law. Uh, not to be confused with the human growth and development policy, the health education policy is being updated to clarify potential, or sorry, parental rights when it comes to opting students out of specific health instruction. Uh, employee leaves policy is being revised based on developments in federal law regarding employee pay during a covered military leave. The student anti harassment policy is being revised to clarify that harassment allegations can apply to a group of students, not only to individuals. The suspension and expulsion policy was revised to reflect that the term principal may be als- or may also include associate or assistant principals. Uh, let's see, the federal, sorry, the facility security policy was revised to clarify the definition of metal detectors to include handheld wands. Surprised that wouldn't have already been included, um, and it also has a change to allow school event supervisors to be the person that can respond to school safety situations when there is not an administrator present at the event. And the last one I'll highlight for you, the school resource officer program policy is being revised to clearly state that the SROs are not empowered to discipline students from a school perspective, that power remains the responsibility of district personnel. So, given that background, uh, policy committee brings forward a motion with a positive recommendation to approve the updates, modifications, and edits as discussed to district policies zero one zero zero through ninety-eight, zero zero point zero one.
That motion comes forward, the positive recommendation does not need a second, any discussion? Sounds good. No, uh, I would note, just so anyone's watching, I attended that committee meeting, and there's lengthy discussions that go around some of this policy. Does seem like we handled it pretty quick with a very, um, high level overview of it here, but, um, it was talked through in brother detail, granular detail, so appreciate you continuing to lead that effort, as I know batches come through.
Yeah, we've got another batch right around the corner.
It's in the oven.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
That is all from policy committee.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. Personnel committee, item seven, your, yeah, item seven, personnel committee.
Personnel committee did meet on July fifteenth, all the committee members were present, along with other board members that took time on other days to join us for the participation part of it, or the discussion part of it. Uh, it's not expected, but always appreciated. Um, the first matter of business, uh, Mr. Noack took care of when walking through, uh, teacher contracts, resignations, retirements, and he gave us a staffing update. Um, the next item of business was the employee handbooks. Uh, those are updated throughout the year, those are a living document that as changes are required, we will update them as we go along, so on the fifteenth, we were simply getting the employee handbooks ready for the new school year and making sure that everything we talked about the previous year was in there. Uh, the committee did take a look at it, we made sure that everything was in good order, and we did come forward with a, a motion, a recommendation on that. Uh, the s- s- third order of business was building substitutes, which.
Do you wanna, you wanna handle that?
What do you wanna do, the motion right away?
Uh, it's up to you, I suppose, it's your update, that'll be item B of seven. We have B seven, approval of employee handbooks. Uh, if you wanna give me that motion, positive recommendation.
Motion with positive recommendation from personal, personnel committee to full board of approval of modification to all employee handbooks as presented.
That motion comes forward, the positive recommendation does not need a second, any discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Thank you.
And then the third item of business was building substitutes, this was a conversation whose genesis was probably about a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, since we talked about it, we implemented four building substitutes across six schools. And how that played out was, uh, the two elementary schools each shared a building substitute. So, after looking at the numbers, uh, looking at it financially and looking at it from a practicality standpoint, uh, Mike talked us through some of the positive attri- attributes that we've seen, Dr. Reuter shared with us, what a warning. Dr. Reuter shared with us what a warning of an administrator looks like when they find out just how many people are not showing up for work that day. So, taking a look at having onsite building substitutes, uh, we were looking at increasing the number from four to putting one at each school. And again, if you go back and review the, uh, the live feed from it, there was lengthy discussion about that. So, that also comes forward with a positive recommendation. Um, motion to positive recommendation from the Personnel Committee to the full Board to approve the hiring of six building substitutes, that's two additional ones, through teachers on call with a daily rate of a hundred and sixty dollars per day for the school year twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five period.
That motion comes forward with a positive recommendation to the full Board, does not need a second. Any discussion?
Yes. In the interest of transparency, my wife has served as a building sub in the past and may serve in the future, so I will be abstaining for this vote.
Thank you. Appreciate that greatly. Um, uh, I, I did get a, I didn't get to attend this meeting unfortunately. I was apparently ordered to go on vacation. Apparently you need one of those. Um, however, I did get to watch it. There was some lengthy discussion around so- most of these topics. And, uh, the subs- the building substitute one was a difficult one over the last year to fill. I do think breaking it down into making that commitment to one building for each one of these may entice the fill rate a little better. Um, and opposed to, I don't know if I'm going to building A or B. So, I think that, that'll help with that. Uh, in the end, we did have them, I believe, full. And we saw a positive experience with the consistency of the person within the same building, so I can't see why we wouldn't want to continue to tackle this approach.
Do we have the flexibility to move those subs around if, say, there's a flu bug at one school, we could flex them into that building?
Yep. And to clarify, they're not our employees. They are employees of teachers on call. Um, but they are kind of designated to an initial building. Ultimately, if we need that service at a different one, I think that's, that's an option.
So, we're just starting with the six every day we want?
Yes, yeah, we're, and I think for those, those building administrators that have to fill in those positions, they have a go-to, it's familiar to the kids. I can only see that it being obviously a benefit. Um, and then they move on to, if there's other fills that need to occur, so. Did I miss anything?
I, I should clarify, it's quite often the administrative assistants that are, are putting in a lot of time filling those spots.
Early morning hours too, because it's not, um, so if they at least have one go-to.
Yeah.
Um, and the fill rates have actually been well, from what I've seen, um, compared to
Yeah, that's a.
the rise in need, we've been able.
They have improved, it, but it's an ongoing discussion that, um, we'll continue to look at.
Sure. Any further discussion around that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none?
I will abstain.
Oop, one abst- one abstention, sorry. Thank you. Pollak, uh, that passes. Eight new business. I, a discussion and action approval iPad purchase, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you. Um, I'm bringing forward, uh, iPads, so seventy replacement iPads that are gonna replace, um, fifth gen and older that we have. So, we're talking about eight-year-old iPads. Um, they're no longer supported. We can't update them with iOS anymore, so it's just a rollout to get rid of some of the old devices. And with this plan, I plan on reselling all the old ones, so we'll get some money back too. So, I'm just waiting for a couple quotes on the resale value to try to get the best bang for a buck, so.
Sure. Fantastic. Um.
And these are spread out between all the schools, so it's a couple classes. Um, I know there's two at Kennedy, um, one group at Amy Bell that has it, um, it's just whatever group was the oldest is going out.
This is a twenty thousand five hundred eighty-dollar purchase. This did not go in front of finance yet?
It did not go in front of finance.
Our business committee for everything to weigh in on?
So, when I decided not to have a finance committee, it was brought to me after the fact. So, um, we just decided to be able to move forward and be ready for the school year that we were going to.
I'm often just asking, you giving the blessing we can afford it?
Yes. It's in the technology budget.
Yeah, well, thank you. Uh, I can hear a motion on that unless there was.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of Apple iPads from Apple Incorporated for a total of twenty thousand five hundred and eighty dollars in charge to the appropriate technology account.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion?
When, when you say resale value, are, are we looking at selling them back to a company or are we offering them to students?
Uh, they go back to a company, so, uh, it's, because they clean them and then we wipe them and they're emptied, there's nothing on them. Uh, but the reseller, just to get, because they're so old that I wouldn't feel comfortable giving it to a student and then they can use it for a couple of months and then they can't update it either. So, it goes to like a recycling program that, uh, the one that we chose last year, um, Total Technology, they actually gave it to like, um, underdeserved, uh, schools. So, that was a nice use, so they got reused still, but a different way, so.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. B, discussion and action approval of academic standards, Mr. Jake Pizziak. Welcome.
Good evening. Annually, uh, we are required by the State of Wisconsin to provide a notice of the academic standards that will be, um, used in our classroom throughout the school year. Uh, we have to post, uh, annually the standards that we will use in mathematics, science, reading and writing, geography and history. Uh, and then in addition to that, on an annual basis, we have to provide a parent notice of those academic standards at the beginning of the school term, which is here in July. Um, the state statute also states that the district may provide an electronic, uh, notice, or we can provide that notice electronically, including the posting of the standards, which we, um, had discussed last year. So, that once parents go in there, what you're gonna see is you're gonna see section three of the Wisconsin State Academic Standards uh, for the areas that I had identified.
Similar to years past?
That's exactly how it was last year.
Any major changes to any of the core?
In all the areas that I just identified, there were not any changes that occurred to math, science, reading, writing, geography or history. Um, the areas that will come to teaching and learning in the August meeting, um, we'll discuss areas that are under our curriculum review. So, one of the reasons why we go to a curriculum review is because the, the standards have changed. So, um, we bring a committee of teachers together to review those standards and review what we're currently, uh, using in the classroom to see the match between the academic standards that, um, the state has and the curriculum that we're using in the classroom. So, um, those will bring to your attention that way. Um, the, the areas that will be in curriculum review this year, we have tech ed and family and consumer science will likely have new standards by the time that they're adopted. Uh, in the spring of this year, we're, we're likely to see new science standards be published. But when they're published, um, they're coming out in the spring, so that's not going to change actually what's happening in the classrooms at that point in time. Uh, so the Board will become aware of what standards have been updated through the curriculum review process and teaching and learning.
As I say, I think we re- recycle our, uh, timeline for reviews to kind of sync with the state standard.
Correct, so that will be, uh, provided in August in terms of the, the review cycle that we'll use. Uh, all of the review cycles have been kind of pushed slightly. Uh, I think that was due to the legislation around Act Twenty and DPI recognizing the lift that districts have undergone to support reading implementation.
Sure. With that, I'll hear a motion unless there's anything else we need to hear. It's a lengthy one.
Yeah, it's a lengthy. Starts with I move.
He's good. I move to approve the proposed notice of the student academic standards that are in effect for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. As said, proposed notice was presented to the Board in written form with a date of July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four in the Board's packet of supplemental materials for this meeting, all pursuant to Section one-twenty dot twelve, thirteen B and Section one-eighteen dot thirty-one G A of the state statutes. And I move that the Board direct the administration to provide parents and guardians of the Germantown School District with notice of the Board adopted student academic standards that are in effect for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year on the school district's website.
Second. Mr. Pollak with the motion, thank you, and Mr. Higginbotham with the second. Any further discussion? Hearing it seen done, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, that passes. C, discussion and action to add additional sections to GST Elementary Schools, Dr. Chris Reuter and Mr. Jake Pizziak.
Thank you. Uh, we monitor weekly our enrollment from about January on. In the spring, I believe it's April, Mr. Noack brought a preliminary staffing report based on the enrollment at that time. Um, our sections have stayed steady on the elementary, middle and high school level, with the exception of four-year-old kindergarten, five-year-old kindergarten. Um, we have an influx of section, uh, kids that have enrolled in the four-year-old kindergarten program across all three of our buildings, or all four of our elementary buildings since that original report, and we've been watching those numbers climb. And instead of coming month to month with, hey, we need to add a section here and there, we know that the month of July, things start to flatline as parents go to Target and see these signs up to buy stuff and they go, wait, I have a four-year-old that's going in kindergarten, I check this out. Or they're, they're coming from a private entity for a four-year-old kindergarten into five K. They've never enrolled their child before. So, um, with the, with the, um, new distribution of students across the four elementaries tonight, we're proposing, um, four additional four K sections and two five-year-old sections at MacArthur and Rockfield combined. We, just so the Board's aware, there's a possibility who might come to you in August again, um, regarding, um, class size increasing. We're monitoring a few elementary grade levels at the lower elementary, first grade specifically, that still sit in the desired range of our class size policy. They might be up one student, but at the ti- at this time, administration's not recommending an expansion because that would then make extremely small class sizes, but we'll monitor if we get an influx at any of those grade levels and communicate that with the Board, um, to look at possible expansion in, in one specific school. But every Tuesday, um, Jake's administrative assistant pulls an enrollment report, which then he provides that report to Mike, Katie, Brittany and myself. And then Brittany does, looks at total enrollment, revenue to it, um, Katie and Jake provide feedback given around teaching and learning, and Mike, obviously, the staffing aspect, and then we communicate with principals around next steps, and then that led to this this evening for the full Board.
Uh, how many, is this gonna be an addition of staff then, correct?
Um, with four-year-old kindergarten, I believe, it's, it's keeping some of our FTE whole that may have been part-time because there was only a morning or an AM section.
Not a new name, just extension of hours?
Um, and I, I believe Jake can speak to this a little bit more at, um, a couple of the elementary specifically, I believe, Rockfield and, um, MacArthur. There might be change of teachers to different grade level positions, which may, you might see a higher at third grade and go, wait, I didn't think we had a third grade opening. Well, a teacher might move internally based on need. I don't know if you have more to share?
No, absolutely. The, the, um, we had existing staff that were redistributed, so a kindergarten teacher was now in first grade. That'll likely be a kindergarten teacher again at MAC, so, um, that's the, there won't be a one-to-one correlation between the positions that were here, but the total number of staff will stay the same. You'll see one new four K name pop up, um, and then two at, um, MAC and Rock.
And those, when you think about those four K positions, that's really a part-time teacher.
Yeah, they have to.
Point five, it's different than every other grade level.
Yeah. Um, so in that scenario, you're probably, I guess, how does that play out? Input from that staff member probably wants to remain kindergarten, but was willing to make the change the first.
Correct.
But now there's an ability to keep her, keep them at that K five?
Correct.
So, we'll honor that and keep, keep them where they remain?
The staffing plan is fluid until the day the children walk in the building, because.
Sure, yeah, I guess I'm, I guess I'm getting to the point of what's the conversation with the staff themselves. So, I mean, because it's, tis the time to be flexible, right, until it started the school year, but.
One thing with that level that we're talking about is certification, um, becomes, um, more significant. Um, like with elementary, you've got a lot of flexibility with grade levels and, and, um, we need to be very conscious of certification in these situations.
Part of the conversation too with principals is projecting forward to next year too, so we're not constantly moving staff.
Yeah, I mean, the goal is not to move a staff member every year and play ping pong with them, obviously.
Especially at a lower elementary, is this year they're all engaging in the new reading program. And then to learn something, another grade level the next year and then go back, or we want stability.
Yep. Any other questions? Any other information we need?
Make a motion to approve an additional section of four-year-old kindergarten at Amy Bell, County Line, MacArthur and Rockfield Elementary Schools, and an additional section of five-year-old kindergarten at MacArthur and Rockfield Elementary Schools for the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five school year.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. D, discussion and action of twenty-four, twenty-five supplemental contract revisions. Uh, Ms. Kate Cole and Mr. Mike Noack.
Um, I'll speak to it briefly. This was presented in spring, uh, and, uh, needs to be brought back. When it was brought, uh, at that time, um, contract amounts that were used reflected the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as opposed to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which they should reflect. Um, there's miscommunication in that regard. It's also, uh, unique in that, um, I think this is the first time we've been in a position to set contracts with, with those correct contract amounts. So, um, these numbers reflect the, um, calendar year and amounts that they should be.
Yeah, these, these are, um, some of our counselors are school psychologists and social workers, and they just have, they have tasks that have to get completed to, um, prepare for the upcoming school year. That includes staff training, um, specifically for some of our new teachers. Um, they provide some training for that, so that's what the contract's for.
I, I will add too, I think in the spring we talked about this, but, um, it, this is the, the continuation of the conversation. We've explored, Dr. Reuter and I and others have explored, um, weaving these amounts into teacher contracts. Other districts do that. There are some implications relative to days and things like that, but it's something that would alleviate us needing to bring that to this group every year. Accurate?
Uh, yeah, I guess I was made aware of this right after it happened. It was a little frustrating, because we had a positive action to get these, these people their contracts right away, and unfortunately, uh, we fell back on, this is what we always do. Missed, missed the boat of getting it right the first time. Um, hopefully we don't have that. Next year might be a little different with the biannual budget, but, um, ultimately, the, the staff is getting the pay they deserve at the rate they're supposed to. That's why it's back on here, and for formality reasons, it needs to be. Uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five supplemental teacher contracts as presented.
Second. Higginbotham with the motion, Mr. Medved with the second. Any final discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. E, discussion and action to approve twenty-three, twenty-four Fund Forty-Six Capital Improvement Trust Deposit, Ms. Brittany Altondorf.
Absolutely. So, back in two thousand thirteen, the state passed Act three hundred and thirty-six. Three hundred and thirty-six allows school districts to place funds into a trust that is used to, um, purchase capital improvements in the future. So, you can use the trust to basically save money, um, for, uh, one large project or just to put funds away for future capital improvements that the district plans for. Um, the reason it is different than just allocating funds into fund balance is because it is showed as an expense the year you move it to the trust, not the year that it's actually purchased, whatever the capital expansion was. So, instead of, for some reason, saving it in fund balance and then spending a million dollars all in one year, it is part of your shared cost. So, if you spend the one million dollars in one year, your shared cost goes up, you get more state aid, less property taxes for one year, and then the next year, it flips back around. So, um, putting it in the trust annually, it continues to go towards your shared cost every year, and then the million-dollar purchase or whatever it was in the five years later, um, does not affect your, um, aid at all. Um, so, school districts are allowed to do this. School districts that utilize this are usually negatively tertiary aided, um, which is our district. usually negatively tertiary aided, um, which is our district, um, because then it reduces that negative aid and puts it into the secondary aid allocation, which will be beneficial for us, it's one of our strategies to get higher state aid and less property tax in our revenue. So in two thousand twenty-one, the board approved the district to be able to create this trust, to create the trust, you have to, one, to create the trust, deposit one dollar to start the time clock because you have to put money into it for a five-year period, you can't spend out of it for a five-year period once it's created, so you put that dollar in there to start the time clock. Um, so we did that, and then at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the board approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go into it, um, so we have deposited, deposited one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and one dollar, excuse me, and then earn in over, uh, seven thousand dollars in interest currently on that trust. Um, you have to do this by July thirty fir-, thirtieth, thirty-first?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, excuse me, thirty-first of every year to be able to book it back to the previous school year. So in reality, this is going to be an expense showed in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, um, that's going to designate the funds into this trust. So we are asking the board to approve three hundred thousand dollars to show as an expense in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to put towards our future capital improvements.
Fantastic. Thanks for the explanation, um...
If I, if I could share, our local district, a neighboring district, has, um, an action item related to Fund Forty-six where they've had a, a mature account since about two thousand thirteen, um, they're remodeling an entrance for safety reasons at their school, one of their elementary schools and upgrading some outdoor athletic facilities by taking out of this where they've been building, so they don't have to incur that cost on their normal operational or capital budget or go to referendum for those things, so that's what we're trying to build the future for, as Brittany brought this forward this evening.
And it, it aids with the, the funding, but it also, as far as the future plan, um, gives us flexibility with money sales years when we can use this to supplement, so. It's all strategic at that point. Any other discussion? Hear a motion?
Motion to approve the deposit of three hundred thousand dollars into the Capital Improvement Trust Bank Account, Fund Forty-six for future district capital projects.
Second.
Mr. Pollock with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second, any further discussion? Mr. Medved?
I'd like to add that I was very much in favor of this when we first created it and three hundred thousand dollars is very good and I appreciate the amount going up, so, good job, much appreciated.
Yeah, I think, so what, four, four hundred thousand plus interest at this point?
Four hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna make an impact, we'll see it in years, I know, sometimes there's discussion around this kind of money that sits around and you have available money, um, people need to understand the, the strategic planning for future years and what we're up against and some of the budgetary processes that can come forward could get, uh, pretty interesting here the last couple of years, so.
For sure.
This is only gonna put us in an advanced place where we see districts around us going to multi-multi-million dollar referendums or operating after deficits and using fund balance to supplement year-over-year costs, which only gets them to zero faster, right? So, thank you for that leadership in that regard, and we'll keep moving. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. F, discussion, action to approve overnight travel request Germantown High School Palms, Dr. Chris Reuter.
So I think the, uh, consent agenda item and this agenda M are coming full circle here this evening. Um, the Germantown High School Palms will be competing against the dance teams in the Midwest, the competition is a qualifying, qualifier for Disney in, uh, Disney trip in February, the dates of the trips are August eighth through the tenth, twenty twenty-four, and the competition is located in Schaumburg, Illinois, seventeen students, three coaches along with parents will attend the trip, student fundraising, parents enter donations will pay for the trip, lodging costs will be approximately three hundred dollars and be covered by the Germantown High School Palms Activity Fund, so we're looking for a, um, approval this evening for overnight travel for those seventeen students, three coaches to Schaumburg, Illinois in August. Um, I would ask, Mr. Pollock, is your, is your child attending?
Yes.
So I would ask, I think abstaining from it.
That was the plan.
Okay, good, you're so involved.
This board's on top of it.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to set a record for the number of abstentions during meetings.
All for good cause. Um, any questions regarding that, I'm assuming not, but...
Actually, I do have a question.
Sure.
If it's seventeen students and three coaches, how is lodging costs only three hundred dollars?
They're all staying in one room.
Hmm, denied. The student participants are, their parents are paying for...
You're paying for the coaches.
Yeah.
Oh, this is the coach's room.
So it's gonna cost seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents per family to put the three coaches up?
Correct, so the, the, um, you can speak to it, but, um, it's usually two, uh, two students, um, to a room and either, and their two parent, like moms, so it's usually a mom thing, um, so one mom and their child and then another mom and their child share a room and they share the cost for their room, they're paying it for them separately, so I'm assuming the board is just approving, uh, one room for the coaches.
Correct, as well as the overnight travel. Thank you.
That makes sense.
You know...
But, yes, that was a question.
Motion to approve overnight travel request for seventeen students and three coaches to travel to Schaumburg, Illinois from August eighth through tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second, all in, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? We have one abstaining?
I will abstain.
And any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. G, discussion, action to approve teacher retirements, Mr. Noack.
Thank you, Jeff Thilke submitted his retirement letter on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, Jeff is requesting the board accept his decision to retire at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Jeff has taught tech ed at Kennedy Middle School for the past thirteen years, in addition, he also taught for ten years at Ground Year School District and twelve years at Howard's Grove School District. Um, uh, this retirement does not qualify for health insurance benefit, um, for multiple reasons, one because, um, Mr. Thilke has not been in the district for the required thirteen years, additionally, he's at an age where the benefit does not apply, this is a, a recognition of his contributions to the district as a teacher.
Fantastic. Any questions? I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request for retirement at the conclusion of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year for Jeff Thilke and thank him for his many years of service to our district. His retirement does not qualify the, for the health insurance retirement benefit.
Second.
Ms. Higginbotham with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion?
Just like to take a moment to thank Mr. Thilke for all the work that he's done, not only in the classroom, but also with trying to obtain recognition for his department in this district. Uh, I know there's probably at least a couple of us on this board who spent some time writing recommendations for all the various grants or awards that, that we've ultimately received, so I think he's spent a tremendous amount of time kind of working towards that recognition and it's well deserved, not only for him, but also for KMS and this district.
I concur, I, we, we will miss Mr. Thilke, he, he's a one-of-a-kind guy, he did a lot of great things in this district.
Yeah, the ownership that he took of the program and the ability he lent to the district is fantastic, uh, he'll be missed, but we wish him all the best and well-deserved retirement, so. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes, congratulations, Mr. Thilke. Nine, closed session. Hearing motion entered, a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, uh, one nineteen point eight-five, one, so, sub-one, sub-G to confer with board legal counsel, who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation which may or is likely to become involved a legal matter. Two, nineteen eighty-five, sub-one, sub-C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any employee, item A, fall coaching contract. So, so moved.
Second.
Mr. Pollock with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Uh, any discussion? I would note, we will most likely be returning into open session, um, from this closed session. Dr. Reuter?
Yes, yes.
Right? Um, so we will come back on live when we're done with those discussions enclosed. Um, any further discussion? Roll call.
Ewer.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Barney, is he yes? Medved?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes.
We are enclosed at nine twenty-one PM. We are gonna reconvene into open session at ten forty-four PM on July twenty-second. Uh, reconvene, so it'd be item ten, reconvene to open discussion, action is needed based on closed session, business, Dr. Reuter.
Thank you, um, this evening, I am, uh, the district administration is, um, recommending the following individuals for fall coaching contracts, I'll read those names to the board. Paulina Foight, Jamie Carles, Robert Wer- Weiner, Megan Foley, Jacob Davis, David Brzinski, Michael Pfeifer, Jonathan Davis, Scott Schubert, Andrew Waller, Corey McCabe, Jason Bowman, Robert Fliss, Sam Mittelkowski, Shad Young, Stephanie Milmo, Taylor Wilch, Jenny Catalano, Warren Seagurt, Christina Burmeister, Kelly Navin, Emily Getz, James Dave A. Davis, Jake Sweetheart, James Uliky, Lori Bruce, Jace Brown, Mary Robbie, Kylie Komorowski, Lisa Stigler, Karen Wunschel, Brian Rushmer, Dixon Seymour, Kelly Swoop, Micah Derlam, Jacqueline Jessica, Kevin Hedinger, Tom Wilcox, Kyle Supernan, Christina Gagan, Benjamin Chu, Aaron Gaskell and Kevin Breitman.
Undertake a motion.
I make a motion to approve the fall coaching contracts based on the names that Dr. Reuter presented.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Medved with the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Item eleven, I'll take one final motion. Move to adjourn?
Second.
Ooh, Mr. Pollock with the motion, Mr. Medved, I'll give you the second, she had a whole bunch in there earlier. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? Any opposed? Nope, that passes, we are adjourned at ten forty-six PM. Thank you for coming, drive safe.